Good evening. Welcome to the February 24th, 2021 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible).
Here.
Here.
(inaudible).
Do I have a motion to recess into Executive Session? We have a teacher matter, student matter, as well as an administrative matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to reopen the February 24th, 2021 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
(inaudible)
Here.
(inaudible).
Here.
(inaudible).
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have two sets of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the February 10th, 2021, and the February 19th, 2021 meetings. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, any questions or comments? They're okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I will open public participation up in just a moment. Before we start, there has been false information shared in the parent community, which I would like to clarify before we start, possibly to alleviate public comment that will address issues that are not, in fact, occurring. There have been parents who have been sharing information stating that our reopening plan has not been approved by the state, or has failed the state's approval. None of that is true. There is no process by which we have to get another reopening plan approved. Dr. Wool met, after we tried for weeks, with members of the New York State Department of Health. As many of you who have been attending these meetings are aware, we have laid out a strategy for bringing more children back to school, which relies on a number of factors being done in classrooms to enable them to come back. A key part of that is ventilation. As you may know, we purchased air filtration systems, which will be located in every classroom, and spaces in our buildings. The reason for -- part of the reason for the meeting with the Department of Health was to express to them that their current guidance, which dates from last August, which states that the only way that students can be closer than six feet is with physical barriers between them. It is our contention that the placement of those physical barriers, in addition to our air filtration systems, is actually not a positive thing. The physical barriers, the plexiglass shields that you have seen, in fact degrade ventilation in rooms. That's true even in places where there are not filtration systems, where there are windows and doors open in an effort to have ventilation improved in classrooms. Unfortunately, the Department of Health is not going to change their guidance. They've made it very clear that they will not change any of the guidance that they issued last August. We, as a board, find that regrettable, particularly given how much more information there is available about the virus, about how it spreads, about the impact that it has on adults and children. However, that is the situation in which we find ourselves. Because we believe that the air filtration systems are an incredibly important and valuable way of bringing your children back to school safely, we will be, and Dr. Wool will be talking about the process by which we will be bringing children back in towards the end of March. Unfortunately, we also have to purchase physical barriers. So just to be clear, in case these were questions that people were going to ask, obviously everyone may participate, we are happy to hear your public comment. To the extent that your questions or comments are about our failed plan, or our failed reopening plan, I would urge you to share whatever you like, ask whatever questions, but we will be talking about our plan. But that information was simply false. Unfortunately, people feel free to share false information on a regular basis, and this was some of it. With that, I will open public participation. I would ask that you approach the microphone, identify yourself with your full name, and if you could please share all of your thoughts and comments at one time, so that you just approach the microphone once. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Fran Coniglio. I have two daughters at Harrison Avenue School, and this is exactly why I'm here tonight, to get clarification. So I appreciate you saying that at the beginning of the meeting. And I was confused, too, by -- I knew the last board meeting, Dr. Wool, you said you were going to meet with the Health Department over winter break. So I was anxiously awaiting that information, as so many other people were. So I think that was part of the parents' frustration, learning about it through the Journal News. And I think some of this false information that gets circulated and causes so much undue aggravation and stress to everyone could be easily eliminated if there was an email just with an update. I know the last correspondence was February 3rd. So that's why I'm here today, to get clarification. And I understand now that the barriers are needed. There was a rumor, too, that I'd like clarified, about possibly there was some delay because the filters were in Texas. I'm not saying I -- you know, that is true. That's why I'm here tonight, to learn about that. Is there a delay? I know the last email said we were hoping to bring kids back the beginning of March. I couldn't -- I wasn't sure if you said the end of March just now, if that changed based on the meeting over winter break. We also talked the last meeting about possibly having these videos available online. I would like to know where we stand with that, because I think that would eliminate a lot of confusion, too, amongst the community. I think it's great that parents are involved. This is what we want, right? This is a great dialogue. And like I said at the last meeting, I want to be a part of the conversation, and I can't do that if I'm not informed. I do not get my information from Facebook, and I don't want to get it from the Journal News either. So I'm glad that we're able to come here tonight, and I hope that we're going to push forward with reopening and get our kids in school, because one more day of virtual learning is one day too many. The damage is done, and I want to see my kids in school full-time. And I hope that we just don't forget that important piece. I know you're all working so hard, and I appreciate all your efforts. I truly do. And I think sometimes the little thing of communication gets kind of, you know, missed because we're all so busy, but it will go a long way as we're on this final stretch of almost light at the end of the tunnel, just keeping us informed. There could never be too many emails with the accurate information coming straight from Dr. Wool, or the board, or someone that knows the facts. I would appreciate that. And I thank you for your time, and hopefully we can get these videos online, or at the very least, maybe having some email with the important bullet points to know. I know I look on the minute notes, but they don't really have much detail. So that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Medaloni. I have a high school student and elementary student at Parsons. First and foremost, I wanted to thank you guys for continuously pushing and trying to do what's best for our students. But just to echo what the previous speaker said, communication is key here, and I think a lot of the rumors that have been put out there are based on the article that was in the Gannett paper in Lowood. And I think that by not having you come to us and talk to us about it first, before it's published in a newspaper, where we can all misunderstand or take it the way we would want to take it ourselves, whether we're going back to school full-time or questioning that, we read it, and we digest it, and we share it in different ways. So communication's key to us parents. We've had it for so long. We get our wonderful emails with regards to COVID and making sure that our students are safe, and we feel like you're on top of that. But you need to be more on top of making sure that we, as parents, know what's going on, instead of -- we can't all come to this meeting. A lot of people work, and I also echo the fact that this needs to be shared. Maybe you also have a shared Zoom. But I also think that our administration needs to be in the know. Email should not be sent without communication to your administration first, and making sure that everybody's in the loop and aware of changes as they come, and there will be changes. We're fluid, I get that. But you got to make sure that the most important people are in the know before we make it Harrison, you know, Harrison PR in a newspaper. I know we don't look at what other school districts do. We do. We don't, but we follow the science, we do our research, and I do appreciate that. But there's also something to be said. We knew plexiglass for a long time. We knew plexiglass for a long time was a requirement. We bought the filtration systems, which I think is a great investment for the district anyway, but I feel like we might be two steps behind with the plexiglass. So again, I thank you for everything that you do. I'm voicing the concerns of not only me, but a lot of people that couldn't be here tonight. And I just, just please keep communicating with us.
Hi, it's Tara Felice. I have a sixth grader and eighth grader at LMK. I have two questions. The first question has to do with the plexiglass. Last time we were here, we were hoping for the filtration systems to be approved. I love the research, and I was really hoping for that as well. But if we are now left with the plexiglass, you stated in the beginning of the meeting that hopefully by the end of March, the reasoning for bringing the kids back in phases, if I remember correctly, was because the filtration system was coming in pieces. So we were going to start with kindergarten. If we were to get the plexi all at once, would that mean all of our children could go back at once? That's the first question. And also, on a separate subject, last time I was here, I asked about the children, the remainder of the children with disabilities going back. As stated last time, the district was able to bring back many children with disabilities as early as last summer. Later in the fall, they were able to bring back the elementary school children with disabilities. We have the ENL kids in full-time, I believe, since summer, or at least fall. There's still a large category of children with disabilities that are not in school full-time, and I just wanted to know if we were exploring options for that, if we're working on anything to get them back in the meantime. I think it's just really important. These kids that have disabilities are struggling anyway. Most of them work 10 times harder to just be average, to just get by, and them not being in school is very tragic. So I was hoping that we were exploring options for that.
Hi, my name is Marissa Lito. I have two students at Harrison Avenue School. I was here two weeks ago, and I had asked the question about vaccinations of teachers and staff. I think, Dr. Wool, you had indicated at the time that approximately 70% of the teachers and staff have been vaccinated. I'd like an update on that number. Also, with respect to the timing, I'd like to sort of understand the timeline in terms of when the filtration systems were actually ordered, when they are going to begin coming in, and also whether you have ordered the plexiglass, and when do you believe it's coming
Hello, my name is Michael Cotter. I have two children in Harrison Avenue School. I have a fifth grader and a first grader. I'm here to be a voice for the children. Obviously, it seems like everyone else has a voice, but the children, where's their voice? I personally have seen my son communicate now with his friends only online. He's on video games more than I want him to be. He's -- you could see definitely changes in his, you know, dilemma and his persona because he's not in school. My daughter, the other day, said to me, Daddy, I'm getting to go to real school today. Real school, not the hybrid school, the computer school, I should say. Real school. We need to start to think about our children, okay? Our children need to be back in school. And I know I speak for the majority of Harrison, that we have to figure out a way to get our children back in school ASAP, okay? Seems to me, the more I learn about this, plexiglass, air filtrations, there's other states that are already way ahead of us. We're way behind, okay? Our children are our future, and we have to put our children's interests first, number one. None of us even realize the detriments that's happening to our children by what's been happening to them over the last year with them being in virtual and hybrid school. Our children need to be in school full-time. And I want to make another note about teachers. I value teachers very much. I'm a healthcare provider. I consider myself an essential worker. Teachers are essential workers, too, and our children need their teachers in the classroom with them. We need to figure this out immediately, immediately, for the sake of all of our children.
Hi, I'm Filomena Bruci. I have three kids at Purchase Elementary School, two are in first grade, and my son is in fourth grade. I'm glad that we're going to clarify everything with the Journal News, because it is unfortunate that it made us look bad in the public. But I do have a question about the barriers. The barriers will be a big hurdle for teachers, for students, because they're going to be behind these plexiglass screens. If you go to CVS, if you go to a pharmacy, if you're going anywhere and there's a plexiglass, I can't hear what the person behind the plexiglass is saying. So will teachers have microphones? Will there be speaker systems within the classrooms now? Like, where does all of this fit within a budget? My kids are really struggling. One of my -- my fourth grader had a panic attack because he doesn't think that he's smart enough to be in fourth grade. That's not my kid. My kid is like usually a confident, happy, easygoing kid, and now he thinks that he's not smart enough to be a fourth grader. He doesn't think he has that confidence to go forward, right? Like, where, how about our social, emotional for our children? Like, our kids have been put on a ship. It's a shipwreck. They're sinking, and there are no lifeboats, there's no lifesavers. Like, there's nothing for them right now. It just seems like everyone is sinking, and the more and more this is going on, they are sinking, and they're failing. They don't know how to be social anymore. They're -- they hate the hybrid. They want to be in school. They want to be with their teachers. So I have a couple of questions. So I'm very confused about the state guidelines. These guidelines were set in August, August 22nd. It is now seven months later. The guidelines have not changed. The six feet, it's six feet with masks. No, I'm sorry. It's six feet with a mask on, but it's okay to have lunch in a classroom, it's okay to go to a sporting event, it's okay for kids to be in pods outside of school when they're not in school, but they can't be in a physical building with their teachers and the rest of their peers. So then their teachers, I'm sorry, there are students whose parents are using this hybrid model and opting for virtual, yet they're in Australia, they're in Florida, they're all over the place, and they're taking advantage, whereas I haven't seen my parents in a year. I haven't seen them in a year, because I'm trying to keep my kids away from them so that they can stay safe, and we can stay safe, and I'm following all the rules for school, yet parents are taking advantage of this virtual school, and they're taking a seat away from kids that actually want to be in school. So I don't think that this is going to work. Like, can we send out a survey and say, are you planning on coming back to school? And if you're not, please stay virtual for the rest of the year, and let the kids that want to come to school, come to school. Because as parents, we have choices, if everyone's comfort level is different. So I'm okay with sending my kids to school, but if you're not, and that's your choice, and you want your child to be on virtual, that's fine. But don't take it away from us, who want our kids in school. At a given time, right before break, my son said that there weren't four kids in his class. Four, when there were supposed to be 11 or 10. So how is that fair to the kids that physically want to be there? It's not fair. So also, how do we bring back kids in September? Where are the guidelines going to be? Like, will they be, again, three feet apart, or six feet apart, with masks or without masks? How is this okay, when now sports are going on? There's -- my son has been playing indoor basketball in Connecticut, in Brewster, in Yonkers, and that's okay, but we're not allowed to be in school and learning. This is really the most demented thing ever. My cousins in Italy have been in school this entire time, this entire time, and our kids are not, and that's fine. They're -- but also, how is Long Island, how do they have 80 schools physically in school, and we don't? Bronxville even has two-thirds of their high school back in school. Why can't we have our seniors, our juniors, our freshmen going back and experiencing the things that should be experienced and learning? How are they going to be prepared for the real world? It just doesn't, this doesn't make sense. We also have like a very socio-economically diverse community, which is, I think, essential for thriving community. There are parents that have had to quit their jobs, go on part-time because of the circumstances, because they can't afford to be, you know, childcare. So I'm not saying that school is a babysitting place, but in order for the community to go forward, kids need to be in school so that they can be educated and go on to have jobs later on in life. And if our parents aren't able to do that, what is that message saying for our kids? Like, we need to be able to do everything here for them. What else? So the barriers, again, the ventilation. How are we going to get these filtration systems with the barriers and still have ventilation when the CDC and the New York State Department of Health is saying that ventilation is key, but the barrier, this is totally contradictory to everything that they're saying? If they're saying you need ventilation, there is no ventilation with the barriers. So this makes no sense. So clarification would be great. I've written to Cuomo, I've written to Zuckerber, Zucker, Howard Zucker. I've written to him, I've written to Latimer, I've written to everyone, and I've gotten some responses. Some of them are generic responses that I think were cut and paste from email to email that's neither here nor there. But how do we get our kids back full-time? How do we get them back and have them have as normal of an experience as possible? And as far as vaccines for the teachers, how, it can't be mandated. You can't say that every teacher has to have it, because you have to have a choice. So if the teachers don't feel comfortable getting vaccinated, I mean, I don't mind, I don't care if teachers aren't vaccinated, but a majority of people do want their teachers vaccinated. But what do you do about the teachers that are not going to choose to be vaccinated? That's their choice, but it's also one of the criteria. So how do we handle all this?
Hi, I'm Jamie Lores. I have two boys at Harrison Avenue. I don't want to repeat what everybody said, but I had a simple question about our playgrounds for our elementary school kids. Playground are open all over the community, all over our towns. If we can't get our kids back to school immediately, at least we can give them some sort of normalcy. So opening the playgrounds would be essential, and could probably be done immediately, especially with sports starting as well.
Hi, I'm Liz Brown. I have three sons that go to Harrison Avenue. I've tried to come to every single one of these Board of Ed meetings since September. I've learned a lot. I've gained a great appreciation for how hard you guys work. And to be honest, I wasn't even going to get up and speak tonight, because I got a very thoughtful letter from Dr. Wool that explained all this to me. My bit of advice about that was, you should send that email out to everyone, because I do think that you've put so much effort into it, and not everyone realizes that. So maybe next time, instead of talking to the newspaper first, send that nice email out to the whole group, but we all make mistakes. But I'm here to actually talk about something that happened to me at school today, that I'm beyond disappointed and disheartened about. Today was the 100th day of kindergarten and first grade. My son Grayson is in kindergarten, and it was probably the first exciting, normal-ish day of kindergarten. We have a little shirt with 100 different things on it that we made for my son Hudson, who's in fourth grade. We passed it down to Griffin, who's in second grade, and now rite of passage, Grayson gets to wear it. We're very excited about it. Yesterday, my second grader had the sniffles to follow the rules of the district. I brought him to the doctor. My pediatrician said, why are you hearing he has the sniffles? And I said, they're probably going to ask me for a COVID test. I'm not going to send him to school tomorrow, but let's just be ahead of the game. So I had my second grader tested for COVID yesterday. I said to the doctor, are the other two cleared to go to school tomorrow? She said, yes, your son does not have COVID. I said, okay, great. I get up this morning, I dutifully fill out the Crisis Go email that I do every single day, which I know a lot of people don't do, but I do it, because I'm trying to be a rule follower. I fill it out. My fourth grader, my kindergartner, based on the questions, get a green light. I send them to school. My second grader, who one of the questions says, do they have any symptoms? I say, yes. He obviously gets the pause, don't come to school. I was already going to keep him home. 9:25, the school nurse calls me and says, hi, Mrs. Brown, what's going on? You know, how's Griffin? I said, Griffin's fine, but he has a runny nose, and since that's one of the criterias, I'm keeping him home from school. And she said, okay, great. And she said, are you thinking about getting a COVID test? And I said, oh, I already got it for him, because is that, my understanding is that's the rule to come back to school. And she says, yes, it is. And I said, okay, great. You know, hopefully, we're going to get the COVID test back later this afternoon or this morning, and he'll have it, and if he's better, he'll go back to school without the sniffles on Friday. And then I volunteer the information and say to her, and so you know, I cleared it with my doctor, and she said it was fine that my other two kids came to school. And she goes, what do you mean, they're at school? And again, this is me being too open and honest. And I was like, well, they're at school, because Griffin isn't showing any signs of COVID, he has the sniffles. And I was then told by the school nurse, no, the kids aren't allowed to be here, but if you could get a doctor's note from the doctor saying she does not think your child has COVID, then it's okay. And I said, okay, great. You know, give me a little bit of time, let me get a message over to the doctor's office. I immediately send the message. While I'm waiting for the doctor to call me back, the nurse calls me back and says, I've just spoken to the principal and the vice principal, you have to come get your kids. And I said, no, because this is when it has to stop. Because this is what I feel like Dr. Cotter was mentioning. At some point along the way, we have forgotten that these are small children with emotions and feelings, and we are not robots. And I'm sorry if there is a specific protocol in place that maybe I didn't understand completely, but you are not pulling my six-year-old at a kindergarten and ruining his 100th day, because it is BS. It is not right. And at some point, all of us, all of us adults, have to start realizing, we can't just be robots. These are little kids with feelings. So I kindly said to the nurse, please have the principal call me about it. And I had a conversation with the principal about it. And I had a conversation with the principal about it. She said, no, these are the rules, don't be combative with me. And I love her, and I have a lot of respect for her, but even I lost my cool at this point, because it's just too much. It's too much. Just like our children are not robots, I'm not a robot. So after hanging up the phone with Valerie, I burst into tears, because now I have to go to the school and get my six-year-old and say, you can't do your 100-day of kindergarten when you haven't had a kindergarten. It's not fair to these kids anymore. They are too little. So then, I have to go to school, and Grayson comes out with his little 100-day crown, because he's already made it, with big tears in his eyes, being like, does Griffin have COVID? And I'm like, no, he doesn't have COVID, but we just have to go home, because we're not allowed to be here. And it's just too much. You guys are putting, and I know it's not you, I know a lot of this is the state bull shit, but it is too much. I'm, it's just, it's overwhelming, and I don't get overwhelmed easily. So I brought him home. Now, just understand this timeframe of how insane this is. Brought him home at 10:20. I get the email back at 10:40 from Dr. Carton, who also heard children have great successes in your school here, who loves Harrison as a school district. She's like, oh, I don't need to write you a letter? He's negative. So then I go through sending it back, being like, oh my God, like, maybe they'll let me bring the kids back. I send it back, they get back to me right away, and the nurse is like, okay, you're cleared, they can come back. And I go to my kindergartner, I'm like, do you want to go back? And he's like, no. Because it's over. The excitement is done. You've kicked a little kid out of school at 9:40, and he's only, and he knows the time and everything, and we get in the car, and he was like, I only got to play, I only got to be there for 30 minutes. It's wrong. So whatever, I know that you guys are working hard, but you guys have to also put into place that we are human beings, these children are human beings. And every once in a while, you've got to cut someone's slack and say, Liz, if you can get me this in 30 more minutes? They're already there. If there was an exposure, they were going to be, it was going to be done. So I just keep working, because I know how hard you guys are working, but just remember, these kids are little, little. And it's really important that we need to remember that when we're making these decisions. Thanks.
Not sure I want to follow that. My name is Zibby Bernstein, and I have two kids at Harrison Avenue. I just wanted to get some very specific information about the requirements for going back. And although you've said the information out there is incorrect, and maybe technically it is, last time you were talking early March, and now you're talking late March, so it does seem that things have slipped. So I'm wondering what the timeline is now? Have you ordered barriers? When are they expected? When do the air filtration systems also have to be installed? When are they expected? Numbers, dates, as specific as you can be, would be great. And I agree with the others who have mentioned communication. You clearly have our email addresses, because you've sent us emails about everyone going back to school full-time and got our hopes up, and now we're all very disappointed. So that's it for now.
Hi, my name is Julio Mariscar. I have a kid in Harrison Elementary. It's the first time I come to this meeting, so thank you for opening the doors. It's very interesting to hear different perspectives. I look forward to hearing your answers and explanations, particularly, obviously, I think the big thing is how our kids are going to come back to school in March, hopefully. One thing that is really driving me nuts a little bit is that I get an email in Spanish from the school district, and you got a word horribly wrong. You call the School of Purchase, la escuela de compra. So I don't know who writes that email in Spanish. It looks like it's written by someone who doesn't want to work, or even worse, written by someone who uses Google Translate, which I don't think is the, it doesn't look like the type of work you're doing here. It seems that you're very highly committed professionals. And it's borderline disrespectful as a Spanish speaker in a school that prides itself of diversity to get an email calling the School of Purchase, School of Compra. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that not even, you know, young kids speak in Spanish. So I look forward to hearing all the explanation. Just wanted to, you know, vent all over that that needs to be addressed on, on Spanish, because it's a poor reflection on the whole thing that is going on in Harrison. So thank you very much.
So some of the elementary schools have the portables? Is that what they're called? Okay. So some of them have the portables. Purchase has them. I saw Preston has one when I drove by before. If we're trying to make room, and we survey parents again and ask them, hey, I know you're at Parsons, how would you feel about going up to Purchase or Preston and having your kids in school full-time? Because we have these portables now that you can't have band practice anymore because of COVID, and we're trying to make it normal, but how about we ship the kids to the places where there is space and have them go to school full-time where there is space? And now that the weather will hopefully be getting nicer, is there an option for having more classes outside, under the trees, or at lunchtime, having the kids go outside and actually having the whole time without their masks on while they're eating? Is that an option? Is that something that we can potentially look at and say, how do we make the rest of this experience for the kids as normal as possible for the rest of this year? And hoping that the guidelines change for September, where we can be more normal? But can we look at other options as to like how to space out the kids? I'm sure that if we gave parents the option to have kids back full-time, that we could make room in some of the schools that maybe have an empty classroom or something else of the sort.
Sorry, I forgot. I was asked to ask the question to the board about ongoing enrollment in our schools and that having an effect as we start taking a look at going back full-time. For example, there's an issue with kindergarten at Parsons, where we have, we used to have four classes, but now we have three classes. Three classes that are bursting at the seams. One class has 25. 25. 17 of those kids come full-time. 17 of them. One of our teachers was taken from Parsons and moved to another school that had somebody retire, which I, I believe, that's what I was told, and moved over to Purchase, which has 17 to 19 students per class. So if you take a look at it, you know, if you had the two classes, it would come back to about 25 kids per class if you kept the two classes at Purchase. But then you take a look at Parsons, and we have ongoing enrollment issues at our school constantly. People are constantly coming in. We have three people coming in fifth grade. We have more students, two more kids coming into kindergarten. How do we solve for making sure, where we know we have enrollment issues, that we make sure that we are looking at our staff and, and making sure that we are set not only for start of school for September, but for what we know happens at our school at Parsons by January, when we get an influx of more students? We've got to plan these things better, because the concern that a lot of kindergarten parents have, I don't have a kindergarten student, but they, they want to be here, but they can't, they're working. How do you, how do you make sure, like, how do you make sure that those kids are going to have the same classroom experience that the kids at the other schools get? There's an equity question that's out there. I know we're equitable, we're for every single child, but when you start taking a look at 25 to 26 students per class, three classes, one teacher was taken away, a few parents have come to me, since I am on the PTA, have come to me and said, should I enroll my student in kindergarten next year? There's three classes. Do you know if they're going to be big classes? I have no idea. But Parsons is starting to get a reputation of having larger classes for the lower grades. That's, that's what's been put out there? I'm bringing it to your attention. And I just wanted to ask, is there, are we going to take a look at that resource again as we look to our 2021, 22 planning? Another concern is, what are the budget implications of everything that we have to put out there coming from our school budget versus the CARES Act? To make sure that we are protecting the small class size that this district is so well-known for. My son has had such a great experience all the way through high school and has had smaller classes. How do we make sure we maintain that, even if we do look at a potential negative budget for next year? I'm not sure if that's the case, but make sure that we're keeping things whole and
Hi, I'm Jen DiGilio. I have two children at Preston, a fourth grader and a second grader. Couple of things near and dear to my heart is, I know the Plexiglas wasn't your first choice, I know it's not your last choice, I know, however, our hands are tied. One, Plexiglas is known to be flammable. What are the fire implications of having those boxes around children, especially if we're moving them closer than six feet apart and getting in and out of that classroom? Two, from a friend who's got a middle schooler, what's the cleaning implication on that every 40 minutes when they change classes? As well as looking at it from an elementary perspective, they're kids. Plexiglas can scratch easily, Plexiglas can damage easily. Philomena said it best, kids have hearing, hearing issues. I know some of my other friends are concerned that they don't necessarily qualify for that 504, and they're not in the classroom with the mics, but what happens to these kids now? So that's, again, again, I know it's not your first choice, I'm very well aware of that, but it raises a lot of internal concerns there. Thank you.
Unless there's anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. With that, we will close public participation. We're actually going to change the, the order and get right to the superintendent's report. He will be updating us on our reopening plan, addressing, I think, pretty much every one of the issues. And after that, I will give my update and share upcoming dates and information and some good news about our students.
I'm going to try to hit every single thing that you said, but I have people to my left and right who'll remind me if I don't. First of all, last time you were here, you asked if the board meetings could be put online. They're online. You can watch the last one. They're available on our website on the Board of Education page. Andy, what's the tab called?
It's a YouTube channel, it's E C S T cable access.
But you don't need to go anywhere but to the district website. If you go to the board page on the left side, you'll see board meetings. You can click it. I was watching it in preparation for this meeting, because sometimes there's confusion. And I get confused, because sometimes people say things that they think I said, and I want to make sure I didn't say what I was quoted as not saying. So let me start there. Communication, it's near and dear to my heart. I'm not sure, Sharon, what administrator is saying to you that they're not aware of what's going on here, but that would be a total shock to me, as they're usually intimately involved in every inch of the planning in an agonizingly detailed way. But I did say a lot of things last week, and the, the question is why I didn't send you an email between the board meeting and my meeting with the Department of Health, New York State Department of Health, which took me three and a half weeks to get, and I announced that I was going to get it. I had it on Friday, February 19th, at 12:30 in the afternoon. And I suppose I could have sent you an update about that in a decontextualized way, but I didn't learn until today at 5:30 today where our air filtration systems were in the manufacturing and delivery process, because as some of you are aware, they're manufactured in Houston, Texas. Houston's apparently not used to snow, and the factory's been offline. So I could have sent you some email, but I didn't think that sending you something unless you were really paying attention to what was going on and you knew that I was going to have this meeting was going to make much sense to most people. My job is to communicate thoroughly when I have a lot to say. And everything that I said, by the way, back in my last email, is still accurate. There's a couple of things that have changed, but not much. And let me start where my decision-making lives. Every day, all day, all the time. Two priorities, right? They're your children, but the moment they cross that threshold, they're mine. I have a responsibility to every one of them to keep them safe. I have a new dynamic now. For a long time, the health and safety of teachers was at risk. That dynamic has changed now. Adults are vaccinated. The vast majority of our teachers are vaccinated. And as I said last time, and I'll repeat, we're not going to not open school because every teacher either didn't get vaccinated or chooses not to. We asked you, and thank you for helping, to advocate so that teachers get, get moved to the front of the line. They did not. Yesterday, as a result of your 400 letters, the governor sent out a new executive order that is essentially meaningless, but it does give us one option we didn't have before. Teachers are now required to tell us whether or not they got vaccinated. That's not what I asked for. I asked to give school districts access to vaccine so anybody that wanted could get it. That issue is kind of sailing, because our teachers have been so resilient, they've driven as far away as Plattsburgh to be vaccinated. So that's not going to keep your kids from coming to school. The second issue is, our plan was never in jeopardy. You don't need to worry about the arrival of barriers, but I'm just going to say this to you, because your children's health and safety is my main concern. I get paid to figure out how to keep your kids safe and well-educated. So here's where I live right now. I'm going to bring all your kids back. I'm going to socially distance them at three feet instead of six. I wanted them to wear masks and benefit from a filtration system that will remove COVID from the air in a typical classroom five to seven times in 45 minutes. I did not want barriers for a host of reasons. You named many of them. Kids can't hear, they can't see. It degrades the social interaction that kids have. It limits the ability for teachers to be interactive. So my work in going to the New York State Department of Health was to say, your rules don't make sense, and they're not aligned with the CDC. I didn't have to do that. I did it because I thought it was in the best interest of your children. But let me say this to you. I would not bring your kids back at three feet and masks with barriers. Why not? Let's think about this. We know that the new variant is not lethal, or more lethal, but what do we know? It's much more contagious. The barriers are little more than bad theater. I've researched everything I can find. 175 infectious pediatric disease specialists rated it the least significant thing you could do to help kids. So I advocated not to have it, because here's what I'm afraid of. I actually want to bring your kids back to school in a meaningful way. If they're sitting behind a plastic barrier, I want you to think about this, and Philomena, you're 100% right. I pointed out to the New York State Department of Health that their guidance makes no sense. You say, put up no barriers that impede ventilation. We're going from 12 kids in a classroom to 22. At six feet and a mask, there's no barrier required, and our ventilation is not that good, so we didn't opt for barriers, even though we could have, because it would have not helped. Now I'm going to bring 22 kids back, and I'm going to erect in this classroom 22 barriers. Have you ever seen a kid use a barrier? This is what they do. They sit here, and then they do this. They go hi. So I made an alternative suggestion, foolish me. How about we give every kid a face shield? When they turn, the shield turns with them. A face shield costs $10. It can be cleaned, you can take it with you. It doesn't degrade the experience for kids. Because what is going to happen in many cases, thank God our teachers will work harder than this, is it turns into an in-person Zoom session. Because the teacher can't project their voice, the kids can't see, nobody can hear, and so what do we do? We're bringing kids back in an environment that doesn't make sense. We're bringing kids back in an environment that doesn't make sense from a health perspective or a pedagogical perspective. So the article that you guys are quoting, I didn't call Gary Stern. Gary Stern is well-aware that I'm an advocate for doing what is in the best interest of kids. And he called me and he said, what was the result of your meeting? And I said, this makes no sense. It wastes money, and it's going to degrade the experience for all kids. I could have told you that, I suppose, but I thought you were more interested in when I'm bringing your kids back to school. And I didn't have that answer until 5:30 today over dinner because Houston shut down because of snow. And the shipment that was supposed to arrive and is still sitting on a truck, we finally got a truck driver apparently to bring the first shipment, is going to arrive Wednesday with the first 30. So here's what I know, and it could change because there are certain things that are actually not within my control, like common sense. We were originally promised 30 per week, which is not very many, right? We have 16 kindergarten sections with our average class size well below 22. Sometimes there are anomalies. We've now got the manufacturer to commit to 60 per week. So our goal is to have every K-5 student back by March 22nd. Some may come sooner or not. I'm not going to sit here and give you a story that says I completely guarantee that the manufacturer is going to come through. By the way, that's exactly what I said the last time we met. I said, there are variables out of my control. But here's what I'm going to tell you, and people say other school districts are doing it. Think about your child's well-being. Do you really want me to bring your kids back with COVID being more infectious than it's ever been, socially distanced at three feet based on barriers that I'm telling you are meaningless? Because that's not what I want to do. My job is to protect your kids even when it makes you mad at me. I would like to have them all back right now, and I have every belief, by the way, that intersects with the week leading up to spring break. If you look at the calendar, right, the 22nd, and then we're off. My goal would be, we're going to continue to get 60 a week until we get to the actual number that we fill out our order. And yes, they're all on order, and yes, the barriers are all on order. I didn't want the barriers. They make no sense. But I was forced to do it because I couldn't get the New York State Department of Health to adopt its own standard. In that meeting, I advocated for some other things that are driving us nuts. The CDC says if you're vaccinated and you're exposed, you don't have to be quarantined. I have a teacher right now that's vaccinated that was exposed that's quarantined because New York State hasn't updated their rules since August. We're doing surveillance testing. Do you know why we're doing surveillance testing? We're doing surveillance testing to make sure the infection rates in our school are low, but in order to know that they're low, I have to know what the infection rate is in our community. That's the recommendation of the CDC. When I asked the Department of Health if I could have that data, they said no. So I'm implementing something that's supposed to help us, but it won't. Folks, I want you to understand that I am so with you and frustrated and angry all the time, but not at you. There's a lot of madness. And this concept of communication, I promise you that I tell you things that I think you need to know when you need to know them. Because, you know, I see what's on Facebook. I don't know how you took away from that article that our plan wasn't approved. Our plan always was approved. It exceeds the expectations of New York State. I just had to remind them of that. What I was asking for was relief. Don't make me put barriers in classrooms that don't help teachers, that don't help kids, that make them more uncomfortable. And by the way, you know we sanitize our classrooms every single day, right? You're aware of that? Some districts do it once, and we do it every day. Guess what happens to the barriers when they're sanitized? They become less and less clear. And I swear to you, when I talk to these people, they actually say to me, those are great suggestions, but it's not in the guidance. You think you're frustrated? There is nothing we are not doing. I'm telling you, if you want me to do what other people do, you got the wrong guy. Because the only thing that I will ever do, I don't care who talks to me or who likes me or doesn't like me, including these folks, is keep your kids safe. I would not send my kids back to school right now with this infection level and these new variants without these filtration systems. I think it would be irresponsible. My opinion. What is my opinion based on? Almost every piece of research I can possibly find. There are two things that the CDT prioritizes. This thing and ventilation. And the state of New York is making me erect 22 physical barriers in every classroom to degrade the ventilation I'm bringing in to protect your kids. So I apologize for the snowstorm in Texas, which delayed the first delivery, which was supposed to happen over the break on Friday. It's called an act of God. I had no control over it. And so, yes, our timeline is delayed. So the question for me, maybe not for you, is do I just junk the theory that I need to keep kids safe because you're getting impatient? Or do I wait a little bit longer and try to bring your kids back in a way that I think makes sense for children, is safe for children? It's a very difficult circumstance to be in. And I wanted to speak to Liz because I feel your pain. But let me just flip this on its head, right? Because it depends on where you sit. We were very lucky that your child was negative. We've had kids come to school in the same circumstance who weren't as honest as you, and they were positive, and their siblings came to school. You know what happened? Three classes were affected, not one. It's terrible. You think everybody's heart doesn't break that a little person's opportunity for their 100-day celebration is taken from them? Of course it does. But we're in the business of doing the greater good. It's not easy. Vaccines, testing is coming. It's going to be piloted. Brian, when is it going to be piloted?
We're starting the first pilot on Monday at Harrison High School with a small group.
You want to just speak a little bit about what it's going to look like?
Sure. So our goal is to do surveillance testing of 10% of our students and staff on a weekly basis. We're going to start initially on Monday at the high school, just doing 5% so that we can test the implementation and all of the logistics. And then the following week, the week of March 8th, we're going to be rolling that out at 5% to the other five schools so that by the following week, our goal is to be at 10% in all six of the schools. To really accomplish two goals. One, monitor for the positivity rate. And because the testing is only meant for asymptomatic individuals, anybody that we identify that happens to be positive, we will identify them as early as possible and be able to isolate them so that they don't risk infecting others, which only increases the rate of quarantine for everyone else.
Thank you. So you're going to be getting an email from me, and it's going to say what I just said here, very unequivocal. Our goal is to get your kids back, all of them, K-5, by the 22nd. Guess what? It could be sooner. I'm not going to hold back. If the deliveries come early and we're able to do it faster, we will. That's the plan. But I'm not going to put them back in class with Plexiglas barriers because that's not going to keep them safe. And hopefully, by the time you get back from spring break, if the deliveries continue to be as robust as the factory claims they can make them now, we're going to bring all your kids back, as I said to you, somewhere within a total of four to six weeks. That's the goal. But not too quickly if it's unsafe. I'm just not there. I'm not going to go to sleep at night thinking, I didn't do what I thought was in the best interest of your kids. The UK variant, the most recent research I read, which is everywhere in New York now, is six times more infectious than the other virus. I'm bringing back, instead of having 12 kids at six feet, I'm going to have 22 kids to 24 kids at three feet. We need to be smart. And I'm going to share something else. You mentioned the other emails you get from us. Last time we were at this meeting, you asked me a tough question. You said, Dr. Wool, are you going to force us to close school after the February break? And I said, no. What's the data, Brian? In the last 72 hours?
Well, in the month of February, three and a half weeks, we've had 44 cases that's resulted in quarantining over about 103 people. More troubling than that, in the last 72 hours, so from the update I sent on Sunday night to the update I sent tonight, we've had 22 positive cases in the district.
And I'm just going to explain to you what that is. That is not what's going on in sports. It's not what's going on in our schools. It's what's going on in our community. If we don't protect your children in our community, they come to school infected. If you don't wear a mask, if you think it's okay for your kids to go and have a party, you know, we got a call from the Department of Health that frankly was embarrassing to me, and it was made to another local community. We had teenagers having a supervised adult supervised party unmasked. Folks, we all need to stand up and say, that's not okay. Because you know what? I have children now, I don't like to tell you the story, that are quite sick with COVID. The theory that kids don't get sick is a theory. Some kids get really sick. And when you think about how fast I'm going, ask yourself a different question. I have two kids. There is nothing in the world that is more precious to me than my daughters. I don't want to put your children in a circumstance where I'm not sure this is the best thing. Somebody wrote me a really nasty letter, said, well, what are these machines, magical? Where did they come from? Why didn't you buy them in September? Real simple answer, they didn't exist. They weren't here. We waited because we wanted to be sure we were doing what was right for your kids. I wish that I had an answer that made all of you happy. I really do. I swear to God I do. But that's not my job. My job is to try to work as hard as I can, to know as much as I can, and to influence as many people as I can to do the right thing. The Department of Health promised me they were going to take back three or four of my suggestions and bring them to the larger COVID team. If I don't get an answer in a couple of weeks, I'm going to come back to you. If all of my teachers are vaccinated and they get exposed and they can stay in school, isn't that what we would want? Of course it is. And yet, New York State can't catch up to the CDC guidance? My guidance, by the way, came out two weeks prior to the CDC guidance. You know my guidance, right? Those three parameters. Testing, vaccination, ventilation, called layered mitigation. Just think, I did my homework. The CDC came out two weeks later, said layered mitigation. Ventilation, vaccines, and masking. We are paying attention, even if you think we're not. And by the way, this communication story, I just want to say this. I've attended every one of your PTA meetings, and I make myself available for any kind of a question you want, and I'm coming back for another round. The reason I haven't scheduled your individual meetings, which will now be scheduled, was until 5:30 today, I didn't know what I was going to tell you. And now I do. Those of you that have been here long enough, invite me to your meeting. Invite me to your house. Well, you can't invite me to your house now, but in the old days, I would come and sit with a group of people and talk to you. The reason we don't do it here, somebody said to me, a parent from Harrison, great suggestion. Dr. Wool, why don't you hold monthly meetings with all the elementary parents? Because nobody will be heard. I'll come to your school with your families and your principal, and we'll talk about your school. Anytime you want. I'm like 7-Eleven. I'm open 24/7, and I care about your children. And I want you to understand why we make the choices we make. I swear to you, we try as hard as we... These people have been working, your principals, almost to the point of, I'm afraid that they're going to die. They're exhausted, and you need to remember that. The person who said last week, you know, I want to pay half my taxes, do you actually think teachers are working half as hard? I don't think teachers have ever worked harder, and I know most of you know that. I'm going to tell you, my administrators have never worked as hard as they have, or have had to be as innovative as they have, or have had to deliver news that they know breaks your heart. We're going to get your kids back, all of them. But we're going to do it safely. And you have to get above the noise. You have to get above the noise. So now you have your dates. Let me just review to make sure I answered everything. First of all, I apologize on the Spanish translation. We bought a very high-tech program that was supposed to do a better job than Google Translate. I will turn it over to our director of E&amp;L and foreign languages and have her review it, and I apologize for that. That is never our intent to be disrespectful to anybody in their native tongue, so my apologies will look into it. Let me see. Just want to make sure I covered everything you asked me. I explained to you the delay. I explained to you vaccines for teachers will not hold you up. Flammable barriers, okay. Bob, you want to explain why they're not? Somebody hand him a microphone? And Michael, I'm going to want you to update on the learning plan for the summer.
From the very beginning, back to when we went into the pause, we were well-aware that Plexiglas is not permitted. So we ordered what's called polycarbonate. Very, very expensive, very difficult to get. So everything we buy now, and we have been buying since March, has been polycarbonate. Makes it very expensive, and it's in high demand. You can get Plexiglas anywhere. Schools are having difficult times getting the polycarbonate. So that's what makes the ordering period a little longer to get it. We're actually sourcing the barriers from two different vendors to try to speed up the delivery period.
Before the filtration systems, unfortunately. We'd like to have the filtration system before the barriers, but they'll be here next week. Couple of other things. Where's the lady that asked a playground question? Raise your hand. My favorite question of the night, because it's been the thing that's driving me nuts. But I now have a piece of research that says if we put hand washing stations in the playgrounds and we do this between classes and we try to just at least clean the high-touch areas like the slides, we may be able to reopen playgrounds. So we're looking into that now. And we also want to see if we can't bring back recess using actual, imagine this, balls and bats and things like that. And Mr. Court, right, has begged me because he loves kickball and he feels really out of sorts since he can't play his kickball game. You think I'm kidding. I'm serious. He thinks he's really good at kickball. Now, you asked another question that's been on our minds. Actually, the team and I met today for several hours. We met yesterday for several hours about two ideas. How are we going to know how to fill the gap that's developed, not for kids generic, but your child? How do we know that? Because we're now creating, using our budget model, a new summer program that is going to be based on what we find out about the learning loss your kids have experienced right now in real time. In addition to that, if you weren't here last time for my budget presentation, the summer program's going to have three prongs. The first is learning loss. The second is, we want kids to remember that school is joyful, so we want to have some enrichment activities, maybe creative writing, maybe theater. So you're not getting a grade, but you're connecting to other human beings and enjoying yourself, finding your voice, remembering. And then the third leg is, we want to plan unique, unifying events that most of the second grade, only knows half the second grade, most of the... So we want to do something before school reopens, before kids get back in September to bring them together. Maybe it's going to be something as simple as a field day. We've asked our physical education department and our fine and performing arts department, as the kids return full-time, our PE teachers are phenomenal, they are experts in social emotional learning and team building, maybe the first three units should all be about bringing kids together. We're working with a guidance department. We're working with a school psychologist. Maybe when we come back, there's going to be a shift for the first three weeks so kids have a place to connect, to check in. We're going to do that with the guidance counselors, even at the high school. Ms. Buca and I were talking with Mrs. Malchesky. Kids are now preparing for next year's course selection. Well, instead of just preparing for course selection, we're going to do a legitimate check-in on how are you doing, how are you fitting in? All of this will be part of the presentation that we make to you when we come to your building. But my... But my Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, who's been with me for 18 years and is my, one of my most valued professional relationships, has done yeoman's work last summer to this, so that we have the kind of information that will let us make informed, valuable choices about building a program for your kids, not a generic set of kids. Want to talk about that a little bit, Mr. Greenfield? Now that I've hyped you up, you better live up to it, buddy.
I think you covered most of it, but I guess I'll add that our leadership team has been working really hard in partnership with teachers to look at all the data that we have, look at data that we're, we don't have the same access to. So, we've partnered with external organizations, including a nationally regarded research organization called Hanover Research. We've been with them for four years now. And we asked them to project what learning loss would look like. And we went back to our first study in April of last year, did a second study in September, and then had them follow up and do a third study to look at our actual results and compare them to the projected results. Just as an example of the kind of detailed research and study we're doing, we look at every individual student's performance from multiple angles. And the purpose of that is to determine, as Lou outlined, how are we going to develop a summer program that actually gets at the specific needs of individual students at developmental readiness? We're trying to study, which is a very difficult thing to do, what the losses, beyond the academic, the content and skills are in fact easier to study than what's lost in all that you've described, in the social aspect of learning. And so, we're looking at that from a qualitative perspective, of course, and trying to determine, how do we compensate? How do we build programs that will reengage students in learning? And see the summer not as a fix, but as a stage and phase in the process of bringing students back? So, we see the first stage, when all students return in late March. And then we see the second stage as the summer, as an extension of that. And then, we see the start of school in September as the third stage of a re-engagement, addressing losses that we can identify and address, and examine how we're going to redesign curriculum for next year that will not look exactly the same as this year. Because we know that there's been transformation, there's been change, there's been loss, but there also have been some gains. And we're also examining what we've gained. And it may not feel like it right now, but there are some transformational aspects to instruction that we've seen. And in particular places, we're going to figure out how to capitalize on those transformations and carry them forward into next year. Because there's a long arc of learning. This is one year in a long arc of learning.
Thank you. My favorite slide in our presentation is called Positives of the Pandemic. Because there are a lot of things that teachers have learned that are worth keeping. But if there's something that should bring you comfort, I hope, maybe two things, but one in particular. So, the thing that makes me the most excited in the world, I promise you, is when we do good work for children. And I'm very proud of our instructional program because we thought far in advance, we knew this gap was going to be serious. We brought in an outside research firm, we gave them three years of your children's performance data and said, project where these kids would be if there had been no pandemic. And we're back mapping from that point to see how we fill that void for your children. We are thinking as hard as we can about this. And I, I know I get passionate, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not appreciative nor completely understanding of your frustration. My job is to sort of manage through that. Everybody wants to be liked and loved. I have to remind myself I have a different purpose. How do I help this board and you make the best choices, both in the short and the long term, for the well-being of your kids? We're not always going to agree, but I can promise you one thing. I will show you how we got to where we ended up. What were the choices that guided our thinking? Most of you, it seems like, agree with me. Barriers are stupid. So, if they don't help kids, why are we being forced to do it? If they degrade instruction, why are we being forced to do it? If I can keep a teacher in school who's vaccinated, why do I have to send them home? My job is to advocate to make those things different, so that your kids get the best deal they can. That's your job too. We're in this together. Your kids are going to be back in school. I'm pushing this as hard as we can. I asked Bob if I could drive the truck from Houston, he said no. My father was a Teamster, I thought maybe, you know, by affiliation, he would let me do it. He said it wasn't covered. I think I could have done it. But it is supposed to arrive, we can't wait. Bob's already had the custodians trained. There did not, there's not a lot of installation, we looked at that. They're portable, they can be plugged in in every space. Bob's already toured with every one of the building principals to do potential class layouts. We tried it without barriers and now with, but we are ready. Michael's working with the teachers. You know, the teachers have a big problem, right? If we bring small groups back at the elementary level, like K-12, if they come first, that's why we'd like to bring them all back as fast as possible. We still have teachers who have kids in hybrid, in 3, 4, 5. And that's like having two different schools in the same place. It's a lot to manage, it's a lot for kids to figure out. Remember too, that we are keeping the virtual option, but it's going to change. The virtual option used to mirror the same option as a hybrid. So, if your child was a husky and they were virtual, they went to Zoom class with their in-person kids, and they had an asynchronous day. Virtual kids will be Zooming every day. I don't think that's good, but a lot of people do. And that's going to make the teacher have to, again, switch their modus of operation. So, be mindful that we are thinking about everything. We love your children. And those are not words. I see these people, I see the same tears in their eyes that I see in yours. This is incredibly hard work. Let's not destroy each other based on rumors and lies. You can disagree with me all you want, I don't, I respect your opinion. Facebook is not actually real. It's an echo chamber where people sometimes vent. And sometimes it is real, but you have to figure out what is and what isn't. And now that our meetings are always online, if you don't have FiOS or you don't have Altis, you can find them online. Because everything I said here tonight, I said last week. And I just want to close. Anytime you want a recommendation for what books to read to your kids, that was my favorite part of having two daughters. And Liz, thank you for reading Owl Moon. I'll close with this. Owl Moon is one of my favorite stories. If you've never read it, it's about a dad who has two daughters. And he goes out at night, wakes them up. Well, he only wakes up one, the oldest one, and he takes her out, owling. But my favorite part of the story is, and it reminds me of where we are as a community, is his little daughter is really excited at first, and they're finding these owls, and he's shining the flashlight, and it's really cool, and it's snowing. And little girl runs out of gas, those little girls do, when they're five years old. And her dad picks her up and he carries her home. And these are the moments when we need to decide, when we need to pick each other up and carry each other home. These are also the times when we need to say to our neighbors and friends, your behavior could kill my child, or it could kill my grandmother, or it could kill some other member of our community. Pay attention and care about one another. We have to have the courage to say that, because we should not have the number of quarantines that we have because kids were out at a party supervised by adults not wearing masks. So, I thank you, I hope I was responsive. If I wasn't, I will come to your PTA meeting and speak directly to you. You can ask me all the questions you want, I promise. So, thank you for being here. Keep a stiff upper lip, this is going to get better. Your kids are coming back to school, and they're going to come back as fast as we can get them back.
Thank you, Dr. Will. I think the only thing, we talked last time about that we would be having, different from our reopening plan where we had an elementary, a middle school, and a high school meeting. There will be individual meetings for each school because the process for reopening at the Parsons School is going to look very different from Preston because the cafeteria is different and all of that. So, those, as Dr. Will said, we just found out about the deliveries and confirmed that the May 20, the March 22 date. But we will be sharing the dates of those reopening meetings.
Yes, and my principals are texting me now about, we'll get to meetings, stop talking to me.
Our expectation is that those will be in the evening so that they will be accessible to as many parents as possible. I also just want to echo, this is, this is a place where members of the community can be really impactful. As he said, how we behave as a community is going to determine whether, in fact, opening school, we get to actually stay open. Remember that where, if a child came into school and it turned out they were positive, you know, that's seven or eight children who have to quarantine. And if they have siblings, seven or eight or nine children in their classes. That's, number is going to be doubled. So, the exposure that people have to other children is significantly higher now. And there are members of this school board who currently have children in quarantine because of the poor decision-making of members of this community. I beg you to please, if you see people doing things and behaving and allowing things to happen that shouldn't, please ask them not to. Nothing that's happening in our schools is dangerous. No member of this board would allow your children to come back to school if we didn't think it was safe. And what's happening in the school buildings are safe. There are athletic teams that are now quarantined, not because of what's happening in gyms. Everything that's happening in there is monitored and people are watching over the children. They are wearing their masks, they're socially distancing when they're not. They're behaving exactly appropriately. They're quarantined because of what families are allowing to happen in their homes. Please, please, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends. If they're not doing what's right, please ask them to stop. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're going to open school back up and then it's going to close, which is not what anybody wants. With that, I'll share some good news, which is that our sports, sports athletics have opened. And I do share the frustration that many people have. It was shocking. I'm a New York Islander fan, and I can't believe that I was getting emails today about going to Islander games, that I can go to an Islander game and children can't, still can't get into school safely. So, I struggle with that myself. But we do have athletes who are competing well. The girls varsity basketball team opened their season 4-0. They had a tough loss to Rye over the weekend, which put them at 4-1. Our senior on our wrestling team, Tyler Joseph, committed to wrestle at the University of Chicago. He has been an elite wrestler, competing at the state and national level. So, congratulations to him on that accomplishment. And we will, I know that.
Most people don't know University of Chicago has a wrestling team, that's not where they're known.
I know Mr. Galano will figure out a way for us to celebrate his accomplishment. The boys and girls track and field team competed at the Hudson Valley Sports Dome Challenge. Peter Fisher won the boys 55-meter hurdles and the boys 55-meter dash. Peter's going to be running track and field at Harvard next year, so I'm sure he will continue his success. Joey Cardesha won the boys 600 meters. And Annika Turelli won the girls 600 meters. And her twin sister, Katrina Turelli, won the girls 1,000 meters. And they are sophomores, so I can only imagine how, how much, how many more times we will be sharing their names in public. The boys bowling team, three members of the team, Nick Colati, George Rugiero, and Kyle Maritzky will be participating in the 2021 Boys Regional Bowling Tournament. So, good luck to them. And we want to also congratulate Brandon Lum and Kevin Pico, who were seniors on the boys bowling team, completing their, their time. The girls bowling team had a number of seniors who were completing their careers. Erica Miller, Anna Wolverton, Kristi Chavez, Nick Colati, Kyle Maritzky, and Larissa Aras. So, congratulations to them. And Nick Colati should have been in the boys bowling, my apologies.
Yes, well, that's not your fault, that's our.
Sorry, someone printed that wrong. And Senior Night for the, our varsity ice hockey team will be taking place tomorrow. We want to congratulate Ben Shapiro, Clark Cooper, David Pizzatello, Ben Stevenson, Joey Harrison, and Jonah Schultz on their terrific careers. And finally, the boys varsity basketball team competed, they have, they beat Rye twice in the past two days. And not that we just have a focus on Rye, but I was, I was told by a member of that team that they, they believe they are the first Harrison Athletics team to beat Rye twice in a season in about a decade, or more. They hadn't done enough research, so congratulations to them. CJ Tummings scored 29 points on Senior Day on Sunday for their first win, and they won again last night. And we want to congratulate six seniors on that team. CJ Tummings, they didn't type the name out, but I actually know this team. So, CJ Tummings, Tochi Onwosanya, Will DeLuca, Sam Tashnik, Leo Mangan, and Reese Malahi. So, and I did that off the top of my head.
That's very impressive.
Congratulations to them. And I, I'd like to, I know we have a number of parents on the Board of Education who have athletes who compete in our programs. I really want to thank Chris Galano and Danny Rodriguez and Robin Webb on behalf of them. They are not only running varsity JV and freshman programs, but an intramural program here at the middle school. And speaking to the toll that all of this has taken on children, the fact that, that we are able, we are making that happen. The JV boys basketball team is currently in quarantine, but their coach was doing Zoom yoga class, yoga with them yesterday, and Zoom play-by-play today. So, our, our faculty and staff are doing just tremendous work to stay engaged with your children and our children. So, thank you to them.
And I had the chance, because you're bragging about our coaches, I just want to pause for a minute. So, you know, you heard Harvard, University of Chicago. We have scholar athletes. Mr. Galano is the best athletic director I've ever seen in my 40-year career. He's a remarkable man. But what our coaches have done over the course of this year, remember, their teams were not in session until very recently. They've maintained that lifeline with those teams throughout the year. And for some kids, it was a lifeline. And modified sports is canceled in every district. So, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Galano came up with a plan to do intramurals. And I was in the gym today, and I, you would think that we were giving away, you know, money, that to, just to be able to do something, the joy on the faces of these kids would have uplifted you. There were 37 boys and 42 girls between the girls and boys basketball and another 20-something in cheerleading. So, those are programs that would not have existed had we followed Section 1's advice, because modified means you compete against other schools. And we will be having one game against a little-known rival, Rye, as a result of these intramurals. They're running an intramural program, so we're going to play each other once. So, thanks to the coaches, and particularly Mr. and Mrs. Zanott, and Mr., oh my God, it's name just went out of my head, Lindy. Not Dearstein, it's our phys, the bowling coach. Phil DeJoy, yes. Not Phil Dearstein, I choose my pills. These are wonderful human beings. If you see a coach, in our district, coaches are teachers, thank them.
And the last thing, I just want to remind everyone, you will get emails about the reopening meetings, school-specific. I also wanted to let the community know, there will be a webinar meeting for, with, about the LMK, the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. There'll be an informational webinar on March 3 at 6 o'clock. And more information will be shared with the LMK community about that. And we are planning meetings for parents to have the opportunities to learn more about the middle school and the high school. Those are scheduled for April 28th, if you want to put those on your calendar. And more information to follow.
Yes. And Ms. Buca, I believe we're going to have students involved in those, is that correct? That is the highlight of the meeting, hearing the kids what, tell you what they really think about school.
With that, I will move on to the personnel agenda.
Kelly, before you move on to personnel.
Yes, go ahead, Dennis.
You know, I'd like to just make a comment. You know. You know, these issues that we're all facing are quite complex, and you've heard quite a bit of feedback and information from Mr. Will tonight, from our president, Kelly Mangan. We're not only thoughtful, we're proactive. And I really want to put a highlight on, we had a conversation about barriers at our last board meeting, and this wasn't just a conversation about whether they were sound, we do not believe they're educationally sound, we do not believe that it necessarily protects the public health of our community, but we knew that the state might mandate us putting up these barriers. And we did not live in a vacuum, and we are a proactive administration, we are a proactive board. The reason the barriers aren't going to be an issue in us opening school is because this district, before the CDC guidance even came out, was on the phone with vendors securing pre-commitments just in case. And if it was not for the work of our Assistant Superintendent of Business, the work of our superintendent in this board to identify the funding before the CDC guidance came out, and secure our pre-commitment in vendors, we today might be scrambling for what we believe are the best barriers to at least meet this compliance requirement, and it is not impacting us rolling this out. And I think that sometimes when we talk about communication, we're so focused on information that we receive in silos, yes, it is absolutely the responsibility of this board and this administration to be open, which we believe we are, but there are also complex issues that we have to devote our time to behind the scenes to ensure that we can be proactive. And we are very careful not to make statements about certain things until we're absolutely sure. And I just want to assure this community, we are looking at all of these issues, and our ultimate goal is getting all kids back. There is not one person behind this table that does not agree with you that every kid should be brought back to school. The question is, how do we bring them back safely? And how do we ensure that we are confident in the program we're providing? And we are doing that. Every single day, this administration was working through your break, this board met during that break. Those conversations are happening, and we are, should begin to question information in silos as a community. And it does bring, and I have to just make a third echo tonight. It is absolutely the responsibility of this school board and this administration to ensure that we can open schools and bring your kids back. But once that happens, that equally responsible is the community and their behavior, because there are protocols for quarantine. We are increasing the number of kids that are going to be at risk for transmission. And the minute that someone is tested positive, it is going to have an impact on more people. And so we are doing everything to meet our responsibility, to make sure that we are serving your children to the best of our ability, but it also means this community's going to have to rise up. And it should be no surprise to anyone that we're starting to see the infection rates increase in our schools. There is an equal responsibility in our community. And I empathize with, you know, the Brown family. I've had to have my kids tested five times, my daughter's been pulled out of school and quarantined, we've had those tears. But honestly, as much as we've been through that emotional journey, we know that by pulling our kid out or doing what we need to do, we are keeping everyone else safe, just based on the if. Because the if is positive, we know we've impacted 30 to 40 to 50 more kids. And so while we're out here having a conversation, and you should be holding us accountable at every step of the way, we equally have to start holding each other accountable as a community to ensure we can keep our schools open. Because there are factors that are out of this Board of Superintendents' control in terms of quarantine and who goes virtual. And it's just a very important reminder for every single one of us. And that's a collective we. I'm not talking about you, that's all of us within this community. So thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Dennis. With that, I will move on to the personnel agenda. I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects.
I'm sorry.
Item one.
I just wanted to know, excuse me, if there was an answer to the question with the children, if are we exploring options for the children with disabilities going back?
Everybody's coming back.
Okay, but in the meantime?
Nothing's changing as of this moment, because the big transition, typically don't do this, but everybody's coming back by the 22nd, everybody.
K through 5.
K through 5.
Okay, sounds good.
And soon thereafter, everybody.
I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Item one, certificated personnel. A, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. B, request for leave of absence. Roman numeral 2, non-certificated personnel. A, regular appointment, SED clearance received. B, temporary appointment. C, change of status. Roman numeral 3, other. A, acknowledgement of student-teacher. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, I'll take the administrative report on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, acceptance of gift from the Blackbowed Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors. Item two, adoption of district policy. Item three, approval of non-resident student to attend district schools on a conditional basis. Item four, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item five, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? On behalf of the entire board in the district, I'd like to thank the Blackbowed Giving Fund for their very generous donation to the Harrison Avenue Elementary School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the finance report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item one, 2020-21 appropriation transfers. Item two, treasurer's report, January 2021. Item three, Southern Westchester BOSI's cooperative bidding. Item four, contract for educational services, Rye City School District. Item five, authorization to purchase health and safety supplies and equipment. Item six, quarterly report for the extra classroom activities fund. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That concludes the February 24, 2021 meeting. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will be March 10, 2021, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School, 7 o'clock, and expected public session at 8:15. Do I have a motion to close the meeting? Second? All in favor? Aye.